31:00 PM. Joni, could you do roll, please?
You bet. Um, hold on one second. Okey dokey. I am going to just call off your names and if you're on, just please say here. So starting at the top on my screen, me, Joni Wilm with AMATS, I'm here. With Sean Baskey with DOT.
Here.
Thanks, Sean. Brian Lindemood with ARC.
Here.
Thanks, Brian. Diana Rhodes, our newest B-PAC member.
I'm here. Hello.
Thanks, Diana. Hello. Jesse Doherty with Department of Health.
I'm here. Hi.
Thanks, Jesse. Emily Weiser with B-PAC for Bike Anchorage.
Yes, I'm here. And it looks like Mike is having audio problems. He has a message in the chat.
Oh, okay. Um, I will, let me get to that in one second. We just finished roll call. Darrell, you are here. Aaron Young-Nalen with AMATS.
Here.
Thanks, Aaron. Lindsay, hi Duke.
Here.
Thanks, Lindsay. Craig Lyon is on.
Here, listening.
Thanks, Craig. We got VIP tonight. Okay, Mark Eisenman with DOT.
Here.
Thanks, Mark. We have a guest, Mel L. Is there a Mel L? Can you acknowledge? And maybe say, are you with the public? Nope. Um, okay. Well, for the record, we'll note that Mel L is on our, on our list, but did not acknowledge their presence. Mike is also another guest. Mike, can you say hello and who you're with? Nope. We have a, okay, for the record, another guest, Mike, is on and we do not know who they're with. Katie Severin.
Hi, Joni and everybody. Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Katie. Thanks for joining us. All right, that's, that's everyone I've got. And just so everyone is aware, we are recording this meeting live and it will be posted on our, oh, Mel L is here with the public. All right, got that. Thanks. We are recording live. We will be posting this on our AMATS website after the meeting. And I'm just gonna check the chat really quick to see if we got any messages. Okay, yep, that's, and it looks like Mike, Mike got on. Great. And we have one more, one more person joining us here. They'll be on in a second. Oh, it's CB Brady. Okay, and CB, can you, can you just acknowledge you're here for the record?
Hi, I'm here. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm on my phone. I'm trying to get in on my computer, having some technical difficulties, but I'm here.
No problem. Thanks for joining us. All right. Uh, Darrell, I think we're ready.
All right, we, we do have a quorum. Joni, would you or Aaron like to do the public involvement announcement?
You bet. AMATS committee meetings are open to the public and the public is provided an opportunity to comment at each meeting. Business items are presented by staff or a consultant. After the committee discusses the business item, the public is invited to formally comment. Each participant will have three minutes to speak on their topic. A couple of things. If you are joining us virtually and you are not a member of the committee, please turn your camera off when you are not speaking on an item. If you are joining us by phone, to mute and unmute the microphone, press star six.
Thank you, Joni. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
This is Lindsay Almoo.
CB, second.
Thanks, CB and Lindsay. Any discussion? Any opposition to approving the agenda? All right, the agenda is approved. We have no meeting minutes to approve. We have one action item on the agenda and that is consideration of providing comments on the 2023-2026 amendment number one.
Uh, okay, yep, sorry. I had this, hold on one second. Let me bring, they were up and then they disappear. Just a second. Just pull those up. We got the comments that were posted online.
So we had a member of the public who had contacted, reached out to the B-PAC and requested that we consider providing comments. I believe there are three or four areas that they would like us to look at.
That's correct. So here is the email that Ms. Nancy Pease sent to us, to, to the committee to review. And these are her topics she'd like to go over. We did also receive one email from Will Tagan with Eagle River. And I also have those comments as well. We can view those if the committee wants to after these.
I'm on a, I'm on a call.
I believe the first topic that Nancy wanted us.
Sorry, I think someone's, if they could just mute. If you're not speaking, go ahead and mute. Thank you.
I believe the first area was tabled three, the non-motorized pathway and trails pavement replacement project. Nancy expressed concerns that the amount allocated for repair was being reduced and the amount allocated for new trail connections was being increased. And he expressed concerns about what actions, what, what trails wouldn't be repaired, would be left unrepaired in order to construct new connections. And so I, I don't know if anybody on the committee wants to speak to that or has any thoughts on it.
Yeah, this is Emily. I'd be curious to hear a little bit more about this and kind of, like, if there's another option besides taking money away from the repaving because, you know, there's, there are quite a few bike trails and paths that are not in very good shape to the point of being dangerous. So yeah, I don't know if Aaron or Joni might have a little bit more information about that.
Yeah, I, this is Aaron. I can go ahead and talk about it. So part of what we have to do with the tip is keep it fiscally constrained. And if you look at the document that was, that was posted online with the amendment, you'll see it's a memo that I drafted that kind of talked about some of the changes that are happening. And if you look on table three, you'll notice that there are some project increases happening, some pretty significant project increases that are happening within the non-motorized table. So the downtown trail connection and the Fish Creek Trail are going up pretty significantly in cost, especially the Fish Creek Trail. It's almost doubling in cost. And so when we were looking at how to pay for that, we looked in the non-motorized table. Typically, that's what we do is we kind of keep the funding within the table that it was assigned when we developed the tip. So to help offset and pay for some of those cost increases, in addition to the fact that the Anchorage area wide pathway and trails pavement replacement estimates went down based on what was actually able to be started in the time period that we have, we use that funding plus some of the funding from the complete streets table to pay for those cost increases. So it's a trade-off, you know? What do you want? Do you want the, you know, downtown trail connection and Fish Creek Trail to not move forward? Or do we want to do some of the Anchorage area wide pathway and trail rehab projects? As for which ones won't move forward for pathway and trail rehab, I don't know. We do have a list of projects in table six of the tip that shows which trails we anticipate providing funding for, which ones we're starting in 2023, 2024, 2025, or even 26. I'm not sure at this point, because it's based on, you know, we won't really know until we get to that year. So I don't have a, a whole lot to tell you which ones we want to start on.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I understand the trade-off there. Is there, is there like a prioritization process or rubric that could compare the repaving to the other trails? Or is that kind of apples and oranges since one is maintenance and one is construction?
What do you mean?
Well, I'm trying to remember if there's a priority ranking for projects in the tip or am I thinking of the non-motorized plan or something else?
No, there's no priority ranking for projects in the tip.
Okay, then yeah, that probably doesn't help. I was just thinking, is, sorry.
No, no, Aaron, this, this is Darrell. I'm just curious. So based on, on what you've told us, is the majority of the increased funding for construction going to those two projects, the downtown connection and Fish Creek? And was the reallocation necessitated by significant cost increases, those projects?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now and the majority of the decrease for the pathway and trails went to the increase in those projects. Some of the carbon reduction funding kind of helped offset it as well. So it's not solely from the pavement, but the pavement did help to offset that. So, um, yeah.
Hey, this is CB. I'm curious, on the Fish Creek project, did that go through, selection-wise? I mean, which option?
They haven't made a selection yet.
Okay. And then I think I already know the answer, but in all of these programs, maintenance is not part of the initial vote, correct?
What do you mean?
Maintaining the trail after it's built.
Is not part of what?
The approval process to get it to where we fund it, but the funds don't.
Part of the consideration.
It is part of it.
Yes, it has to be.
Fantastic.
Thank you. It's recognized, you know, any federally funded project is recognized that if you build it, you're expected to maintain it, which is why we've been trying to call out the maintenance side a little more. So people recognize that any new thing will be, have to be maintained or, or not at some point.
Maintenance in this sense includes snow removal?
Um, yes, a little, but primarily we're talking about pavement maintenance.
Okay. Just for my, for my own drum, ADA requires it for the same for everybody, so it should be maintained. So, but I'm glad to hear there's maintenance money going into it. Thank you.
Lindsay, I think you had a question. Bring your hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, thanks for the explanation. I always want to see the funding for non-motorized in the table in general increased, but I know there are different constraints. And so, you know, this proposal brought forward to the B-PAC was not necessarily something I would have supported because I do want to see these two new trail projects, the downtown trail and Fish Creek Trail projects to move forward. And we were advocating at the project level to try to get more, or less costly options, but there are a lot of community and neighborhood considerations that keep driving up the costs, especially for Fish Creek Trail. So that's a project that I'd like to see move forward and I don't think submitting a question or a comment on the tip amendment would really achieve getting more funding for maintenance and we should just continue to push for that as a committee, anyway. Thanks.
I, I agree with Lindsay. I think the downtown connection and Fish Creek are two of our penultimate projects that, that need to be completed. Any other comments from committee members regarding this item, this proposal? West?
I agree. This is Diana. I would like to, I would like to see these two new projects get funded. So I understand the maintenance issue and appreciate understanding more about it, but I do, I do want these projects to be funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. I, I think it's a matter of, it's, it's like pie. You have, the pie's only so big and sometimes you have to re-cut it. You're not gonna get any more out of it.
This CB, and I just want to say, yeah, I'm, I'm all in, full support. I just, you, you guys know the drum I beat. So yeah, I'm, I, I support for sure.
All right. So does any member of the committee want to move a, make a motion that we submit a comment regarding this, this item? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Could we move on to the next item, Joni?
Uh, you bet. This is, um, so were you just, you were, guys were just discussing the first comment, table three, from this memo from Nancy, correct? So you're on table four now for the plans and studies, new project for AC Streets.
So I believe the proposal here or the request here is that we submit a comment recommending that the AC street corridor project become a complete street plan. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, but that's already actually been added to the language and the policy committee added that before the amendment came out for public comment. I'm pretty sure AMATS staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's already taken care of.
You're correct. It's already in there.
I think Emily's right. Yeah.
Okay.
That was a quick one.
Great. Thanks, Emily.
So the next item, I believe, is the inventory of rights of way.
Yes, that's, that's correct. So this, uh, this item has been before both the technical advisory committee and the policy committee. And just to give a little bit of background, the Nancy is asking for us to map, map easements that are in the municipal database, but they're not formal trail easements. And most of these easements exist on private property. And so the proposal is to include these private property easements into this bigger effort. And I'm just speaking broadly on it, Aaron. Feel free to chime in whenever you feel like it. But one of the main reasons why we can't do, well, staff's recommendation is that we, we can't do this is because we have talked extensively with the project management and engineering and our right-of-way crew at the municipality and the process of developing these trail easements that exist into a formal easement is one that involves, you know, it's a development process and it involves us getting a municipal engineer involved and it involves surveying. It's very expensive. Again, it's on people's private property. And so there's a whole, because of that, there's a whole process that takes place anytime you want to have a formal trail easement declared. So even though a lot of these easements do exist in the municipal database, it's a process of having them formally appear on maps that are then used for planning. And we have, again, talked extensively with municipality, right-of-way with PMNE, and they have all come back with a resounding. And we've talked with Parks and Rec about it, a resounding. This is an effort, we're not saying it shouldn't be done, but it's, it would entail a very expensive, long process. It is a development process. And so we don't feel that it's something that AMATS as an, as an MPO should be doing. It's more of a private development. It lies more in their wheelhouse. And so, again, like, we're not saying, we don't think it should be done, but at some point. But we're letting folks know that the process is very expensive. It's very long. It's a separate process than planning, which was, is what our MPO is meant to do, which, with these broad base plans. And so, again, that, we have talked extensively with so many different people about it and we've all come up with the, the resounding answer that this is just not something that we can include in our AMATS planning documents. So I don't know if Aaron, if you want to expand on that a little bit. And I know Craig's also here and he was in several of those meetings with our PMNE staff and right-of-way staff. So I don't know if you guys want to add anything here that I didn't already say. Go for it.
Yeah, when I, I, you know, I met with right-of-way and their GIS folks at, for the municipality of Anchorage and talked with them about the effort that it would take to do, and the easement work is already underway by the municipality of Anchorage. They have a process that they use already. So that's happening and they have no interest in us stepping into that process or duplicating efforts. And then the right-of-way mapping is something that would require surveying to do. So they'd actually have to survey the right-of-way to certify that it's accurate before they would map it or put it on a map for members of the public or anyone else to use. That process, along with any of the easement effort, would take a surveyor ten or more years to complete for the entire AMATS area. So that's a whole brand-new position and it gets into a lot of problems that really we don't have the capability to do as part of this non-motorized facilities inventory and mapping. And really would take the municipality of Anchorage as a whole getting together to deciding what they want to do because every department we talked to said they have no interest in us doing this. It's not something they would use. Even DOT, the group that does all of the federally funded projects, which is primarily AMATS, had no interest in us doing this effort either. And so for that reason, the cost, the kind of lack of the need for it from the MUNY or DOT, staff's recommending that we don't do this portion of this project. We're still planning on doing the inventorying of non-motorized facilities within the AMATS area. It's just not this extra easement and right-of-way mapping that was requested.
Craig, do you have anything to add?
No, I think Aaron and Joni covered it fairly well. We met extensively with the experts and they, you know, the GIS folks and the surveyor are very clear that it's a little more complicated than maybe the citizen had suggested. And so the request by the policy committee was for AMATS staff to do their due diligence and investigate the request. Aaron and Joni did that and their, their results are there.
All right. Brian, you have your hand up. Did you have a comment or a question?
Um, this one's puzzled me ever since it came up with the paddock. And I guess I understand the, the whole point behind, yeah, if we're gonna put it on a GIS layer and a map and stuff like that, we have to go actually do the due diligence and do the survey and figure out exactly where it is and all that other stuff. But I'm, I feel like, and I don't know, because I wasn't the one that made the initial request, I feel like there needs to be a repository where these things may exist. And I, and I say that from the standpoint of, as we're developing non-motorized facilities and stuff like that, there's gaps, right? That's one of the, the main goals we have behind our bicycle plan right now is sort of fill the gaps, right? And as we're looking at these things, if there's a gap and we, even if the entire piece of property is just, has a color on it and says, hey, there may be something here, that then would steer the discreet sort of wise spending saying, okay, we need to figure out this piece of property, but we don't need to figure out the 1,500 others that may or may not have this. Does that make sense? And I'm wondering, does all this place exist in one, all the, all these potential easements exist in one place so that they're available as we ponder, you know, these plan developments? Just so that we know that there might be something there versus, you know, if I'm looking for a geod and I'm looking at 15,000 rocks, it would be nice if the geod was painted a different color and I at least know to look at that one.
Okay, I think the question comes down to, is it AMATS responsibility to do this or is it another agency? Lindsay, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I had kind of a similar question. I understand that this probably isn't the right, you know, the right scope for the tip and I'm glad that we're moving forward with the inventory anyway. But those cut-throughs and those easements are really important for not only getting around in the city, but I can't imagine what it's like within Chigayac and Eagle River where I'm not as familiar. And I think that's the same comment that we received from Will Tagan was mirroring, mirroring this one from Nancy about easements and making sure that we were inventorying our non-motorized easements. So it's a question for the AMATS staff, as you guys moved forward and did all the search, is this something that would be within right-of-way? What, where could we find this information? And then how can it be accessible, like Brian said, on GIS or somewhere folks could look? Because that's what makes it or breaks it when you're trying to safely move around the municipality.
Um, I can actually interject here real quick and let you know that, yes, the easement information is available already and it's in a spot. I'm gonna share my screen real quick. So sorry, Joni. Hopefully I don't mess too much up, but.
No, go ahead.
Just do a quick screen share. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, so this right here is the MOA GIS page. It's pretty easy to get to. You just type in MOA GIS and it takes you to this page into Google. So you're on this page and you scroll down to this MOA Mapit feature. Let it slowly load. So this is the repository of everything that is GIS. And if you scroll down, you'll see a small thing here that says easements. So these are the easements that are already mapped within the municipality of Anchorage. And as pointed out by Nancy, it is not 100% complete because there's stuff missing. That's why earlier when I mentioned that the municipality of Anchorage is working on this, that's part of that process. They are working on getting this stuff in there as time goes on. And that's why they have no interest in us duplicating the information. Now, these are all easements, not just limited to transportation. So be aware of that. But there is a location where they are at right now.
Thanks, Aaron. Emma, Emily, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. And Aaron, thanks so much for that screen share. That was super helpful. Excuse me. Yeah, I think I had similar comments to Brian and Lindsay where just recognizing how useful these, this knowledge could be as we're filling gaps. But yeah, I understand that maybe the tip isn't the best place for it. It sounds like it's underway. Is there, is there like a logical recommendation that perhaps we could consider making for encouraging this to be done in some way or another, like saying, you know, we understand it's not gonna be in the tip, but we would support this happening in another way?
Hi, Emily. Sorry to interrupt. This is Joni. I was just gonna say real quick, I, in my, I used to be a long-range planner and did several neighborhood plans, but I would recommend that if you, I think where the, a good way to begin this would be to do it at the neighborhood scale. So if a neighborhood or community wants to map, to have their easements mapped or, you know, has potential development, they want to see where development opportunities. development, uh, they want to see where development opportunities, uh, to, opportunities exist for their neighborhood. Um, and they would like to, like, see where there's trail easements that they could, um, then lobby for trail funding or connections and things like that. I would think that at the neighborhood scale would be the best place to start. So I would start in the community council. Um, and come up, you know, get your community folks together to start mapping out and find out in their neighborhood where, um, they would like to see these, um, trail easements become official easements that could then be used for trail planning. Um, that's, that's where I would start. I think that's, um, a feasible thing that could happen. Um, and I feel like that is also a good arena to help get the folks whose private property may be involved at the table so that they can, you know, be part of the discussion and not, you know, end up fighting it in the end, or, you know, become part of the, the plan to, um, get those easements developed into trail connections. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that's a good point. It's a lot harder to say no to your neighbors when they just want their kids to walk to school or something. Um, so are you thinking, when you say neighborhoods could map them, are you thinking of like a neighbor would go onto the map that Erin just showed and say, okay, here's an easement. We're interested in having this developed? Or are you thinking of them kind of helping to fill in the missing pieces from what's there already?
Well, I think so Rabbit Creek has done, sorry, my dog's whining. Um, so Rabbit Creek has done some, um, m- mapping already. So they're kind of, um, you know, they, I think have more of an idea of the easements that they would like to see developed into trails, official trails. So, um, and I know that the part of their effort was to do that through the hillside district plan. Um, and I'm not saying that you need a, an official plan to do this, but, um, yeah, I would, I would get the community council folks together or some members together and look at their area and then start, um, thinking about linkages, um, to main trails. And of course, we have the non-motorized plan developed now. So figuring out where those easements could link into, um, you know, primary and secondary corridors would be a great place to start. Uh, so yeah, would use, use the maps, what's available. And if there's inaccurate information, you know, that is also helpful to send to the Muni as they work on this, um, to correct in their database.
Okay. Is there any way that we can help fill in the missing information that's not on that map yet? Or is that too obscure for us to find as the public?
I think right now that, I mean, so another, one of the reasons why, uh, well, one of the reasons why this is project is too broad, I think for AMATS to tackle as, for the entire region is that it really just takes an on the, on the ground truthing of these, um, these, these easements and these corridors to figure out what's, you know, what's on the ground now. And so I feel like, um, you know, I don't think that there's a way right now that AMATS can, um, correct all the missing information. I'm not even sure. I'm not even sure how, um, right of way is doing it right now with, with GIS, but they're probably working on it piece by piece as development's come up is my assumption. That's kind of how they do, as their staff to do that type of work. So as a development comes up, that's when they can take a look at, um, the, the different trail easements and things like that. But they don't have the capacity to just do an overall, uh, you know, ground truthing of everything. That would, that would be a huge effort.
Yeah, my understanding is, uh, it's based on the plating process. So as these plaits come up, um, the Muni works on them and gets this information into the GIS system. This is not something that members of the public would be able to just say, okay, there's missing here, missing there. It's, it's a formal process that needs to go through and that's all through the Muni right of way and survey section.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful.
Diana, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. This is a, a great conversation for the work that the Anchorage Park Foundation is doing in partnership with all the different organizations on the Alaska Long Trail. So when I saw both Nancy's and Will's comments, we are actually in the process, we got a grant from the state last year to look at finding that what are the gaps, as Brian says, in the, in the connection between Anchorage and the Matu. And one of the things, we have this draft RFP that we're ready to go out on very soon. But to, one of the things we want to do is find those gaps, find those easements and do that, that kind of work, that inventory, at least for the, the missing pieces between the Glen Highway Trail, out to the coast potentially. Lot of different landowners in those sections. And the piece of it that we've been having difficulty is how do you do that? But, uh, this RFP that we're seeking to get someone to do that work for us, where we did get a state grant and we are moving forward on that process. So at least in that particular area, this is exactly what we're trying to do. And so I really appreciate all these comments because I will forward it to our partner that we're working with on this to try and, this is exactly what we need. Uh, to find those missing gaps and help us decide where, where that, uh, Alaska Long Trail from Anchorage to Matu can go. So hopefully we can maybe be a pilot project for something like this to see how we can, how we can find it and then get it on the Muni GIS maps. I had, when I got Will's comments or Will's question, I reached out to Steve Refuse at Parks and Rec. And he put me in touch with the person at the Muni who does the GIS mapping. And they have been doing a lot of it. Parks and Rec has been doing a lot of it as they prepare for the, the recreational trails plan. And as we also just recently got a state grant for the, the wayfinding component for the, both the Moose Loop and the Alaska Long Trail. So they have been doing some of this work. So as you say, Joni, on the neighborhood connections, I think that there is a path potentially to at least get it to Parks and Rec for the, those, those missing gaps. So this is a great conversation for me anyway, to understand even more of the details that are needed for that, for that work as we, as we build out this trail system. Thank you.
Thanks Diana. Oh, I'm just going to interject real quick. Thank you Diana. I'm glad to hear about that grant and that work. Good work that you guys are doing. I did want to just say also that when we begin the recreational trails plan, so which is, um, we don't have, we just have completed the Torah. It's in the final stages of getting approved and we're going to be starting the RFP process once that's done. But once we get that finished, um, we can, um, potentially look at to see, work with Parks and Rec to see what we can include as far as that, um, trail easement mapping if there, and we have talked with Parks and Rec already. And there may be some ability to, um, include especially with these major, like the long trail, like you mentioned, um, and other major trails like that to get the easements included in those particular projects. So just wanted to give everyone's a head, heads up on that, that we will, uh, maybe potentially be able to look into some of those major trail connections. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Joni. Thank you, Diana. Emily, you had your hand up. Was that from previously or did you have another comment?
Um, I'm all set on this one. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Any other committee comments or comments from staff? All right. Does anybody, so, so my understanding, the way I understand this is this mapping project is something that's beyond AMATS capability and it would be duplicative of efforts that are already underway and that this project as a standalone project to map all of these connections would probably run into millions of dollars. So my, my question is if we were going to submit comments supporting this mapping project, who would we even provide them to?
Oh, so this is Joni. So Darrell, are you saying that the committee would like to submit comments to support the mapping of?
Well, I'm saying if the committee, if a committee member wanted to make a motion to support this concept of mapping these missing, uh, easements, these connections, who would we even submit them to? Because it's not something AMATS would do and, and we provide comments to AMATS. And it seems like right of way is working on this and Parks and Rec is working on it. So, so I think even if somebody wanted to make a motion to submit comments, who would we submit them to?
That's a good question. Um, I think because, uh, again, I feel like this falls into, um, this falls into the PM and E and right of way wheelhouse. Like the committee would be making a comment to support, um, a project to them, but they're not an AMATS, um, entity. So, uh, it's not like submitting a comments of policy committee. So I'm not sure who you would submit, um, your comment to, um.
Or, or can we as individual members submit comments to the appropriate municipal departments? Because I
Yeah, I would say, I would say, um, absolutely. The committee, um, the committee, uh, members can, can of course submit comments to the municipality of Anchorage, to their PM and E, uh, section and their right of way section, encouraging the mapping of these trail easements or the, the process. Um, I think that you, you know, you can certainly, we've, we've heard your comments tonight. We are going to be moving forward with what we can with the recreational trails plan, which is an AMATS plan. Um, I think that I honestly feel like that's kind of the best we can do right now, but, um, does anyone else have any suggestions or, um, is that? That's kind of my, I feel like, I, again, I feel like this is best done at the neighborhood scale level. Um, we'll be doing what we can with the, with the trails, with recreational trails plan. Um, but that's not going to be a full scale. That's not going to be a full scale region, or it's not going to be, you know, it's going to be major trail connections that we're trying to connect to. Um, it's not going to be down in the details for each neighborhood. So if there's something that a neighborhood wants, like specific, um, more intricate mapping, I feel like that should, that should begin at the community council at the neighborhood level. Just, that's my feeling. So I don't know.
So, thank you, Joni. So does any committee member wish to make a motion related to this agenda item? All right. Seeing and hearing none. I think that was the last item that Nancy had on her list. Did you want to pull up Will's comments, Joni?
Yeah, absolutely. Give me one second. Let me switch my, um, let me just switch my screen here. Hold on a second. You know, to stop sharing and share again. Okay, is this, that should be it. Did everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So these are the comments that we got from Will Tiggin. I believe that's how you say his last name or Taggin. Uh, apologies for getting that wrong if I did. Um, and he sent these, I believe, last week.
Hey, this is Lindsay. I think the discussion we just had about Nancy's last comment applies to this.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
No, I have to say personally, when I saw these comments from Nancy and from Will, I was excited by this because I, I think we all understand the the importance of, of inventory and all of our non-motorized easements. But I think a lot of us didn't realize what was involved or what a large project it would be.
I agree. It's like, it's very expensive and, but I think that, that some of it will be taken care of. I'm excited. This is Diana, just about this Alaska Long Trail piece to find them and, you know, see which ones are the one, the low hanging fruit or maybe the more difficult ones, but just finding the best route that, that we can, that we can build that Alaska Long Trail connection. And in order to find the best route, you have to know what's even possible. So we are looking forward to spending this state grant to at least in that section, find, find those routes that are possible.
All right. Thank you, Diane. Any other comments from committee members? Our staff?
Are you asking in general or just about this item?
This item.
Okay.
All right. And I assume that there, nobody has a motion to, to make regarding this item. So with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which I think is comments. Am I correct, Joni?
Yeah, sorry. I was searching for the unmute. Hold on. Let me put the agenda back up. Just, uh, one second here. Um, no. Oh, was it here? Let's see. Whoops. Nope. No. Okay, there we go. Yes. So next item is, um, general information. Nope, committee comments. Yep.
All right. And I think Emily was in the queue.
Thanks. Yeah, it's still on the tip amendment. Um, but I just wanted to thank Joni and Erin for some of these other additions to the tip or the proposed additions to the tip. There's some really exciting projects in here. Um, I think Joni had, was behind the move to change the typologies plan to a complete streets plan, which will also include the typologies consideration. Um, you know, there's some corridor plans that include complete streets considerations. The climate action plan is super exciting. Um, and yeah, maybe a little bit outside our wheelhouse, but the, the initiative to do as, as pilot project for seniors and youth riding the bus free is also really exciting. So I just wanted to acknowledge there's a bunch of really good stuff in here. I have, I have more kudos than concerns at this point. So thank you.
Thank you, Emily. This is Joni. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say the complete streets plan, um, was all Erin's idea and he uh, was the one who, um, wanted to make our street typologies plan into a complete streets plan and also was, was, uh, focusing on getting us our climate action plan. So thank you, Erin. He's really been pushing hard for, um, for more progressive, uh, planning on AMATS's end. So thanks, Erin.
Thanks, Erin and Joni. I was excited by that change also. Any other committee comments? Going once, going twice. Any, uh, comments from staff?
Uh, not for me. I appreciate everyone's time tonight and, um, you know, coming to this special meeting. And I think it was an important discussion to have. So appreciate everyone joining in. Thank you.
And thank you, Joni and Erin. I know, you know, helping to get this arranged at the last minute right after the holidays. We really appreciate.
Uh, yes.
The CB, yeah, definitely. Thank you guys.
Uh, sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to put something out there. Emily put it in the chat, but as a reminder, the transportation fair is this Thursday uh, at the Alaska Airlines Center from three to seven PM. There's a lot of really, really good stuff there. So I highly encourage everyone uh, to attend where possible. Um, AMATS will be there. So please stop by and say hi to us. And I also want to echo what everyone said. Uh, thank you all for the discussion. It's very invigorating that you guys are involved and are willing to ask questions and push these things. So I, I really appreciate it.
You know, and it's nice to see the public bringing forward comments and suggestions. You know, and it's nice to see the public bringing forward comments and suggestions lately, to see the public engaged. That is the whole point of having these AMATS committees.
Yeah, absolutely.
If there's no more committee comments, we'll go on to public comments. Any comments from a member of the public? Going once, going twice. All right, can we get a motion to adjourn?
This is Emily. I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you Emily and Lindsay. Any objection to adjournment? All right. Thank you all so much. This was a fascinating discussion tonight.
Yes, thank you guys.
Thanks everyone. Yeah.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Welcome Diana.
Yeah, welcome Diana.